Call to all regular meeting of Plymouth Council, January 8th, 2024. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any public comment on the agenda tonight? Hearing non, first order of business, 20 years of service resolution will be read by Ms. Visio.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. It's a resolution for Scott Severson, whereas Scott Severson has served the Plymouth Township Police Department faithfully since January 16th, 2004, and has therefore completed 20 years of service. And whereas Plymouth Township Council desires to formally recognize the diligent and valuable service rendered by Scott Severson and publicly express its appreciation, now therefore be a resolve that Scott Severson is congratulated for completion of 20 years of service with the Plymouth Township Police Department. And be it further resolved that this resolution be entered into the official minutes of Plymouth Township and that a copy of this resolution be publicly tendered to Scott Severson, adopted this 8th day of January 2024 by Plymouth Township Council. I make a motion that we adopt this resolution.
Is a motion as their second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments by council, by the audience? Hearing non will take a vote. Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Congratulations. Okay. Mr. Torres. Was there a motion for that?
No, I think we're just swearing him in. You bring your family up.
Okay. Who wants to hold the baton? You can both hold it. There you go. Now, please raise your right hand. Repeat after me, please. I, Mako Torres, do solemnly swear or affirm.
I, Mako Torres, do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And Plymouth Township.
And Plymouth Township.
And that I will discharge the duties of my position.
And I will discharge the duties of my position.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
And without consideration.
And without consideration.
To a person's race.
To a person's race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap or disability.
Handicap or disability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do you have a picture with council? Okay. Do you want to have a picture with council? We can use it in our newsletter. It's coming up. Take it first. We have an announcement tonight that an executive session was held on January 3rd, 2024. Next on the agenda, approval of the minutes for the workshop meeting on December 4th and the regular meeting on December 11th. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Whitney. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Visio. Any comments or questions? All right, let's take a roll call vote. Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Next item, approval of the departmental reports and bills. Is there a motion to approve them?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Visio. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nelson. Any comments or questions? We'll take a roll call vote. Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Next, we have a resolution for the liquid fuels will be read by Mr. Nelson.
It's a resolution, whereas Plymouth Township receives an allocation of liquid fuel taxes from the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation and whereas Act Number 114 of 1998, two, as amended by Act Number 2004, 138, establishes the authorized expenditures of liquid fuel taxes by municipalities, now therefore be it resolved that Plymouth Township Council does hereby authorize the expenditure of the township allocation of liquid fuel taxes from the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation as follows. To be expended by the authorities of their respective municipalities, I, for the maintenance, repair, constructive, construction, or reconstruction of such public road or strip streets, including bridges, culverts, and drainage structures for which they are legally responsible, and including the lining of streams incidental to the drainage of highways and for the maintenance, repair, construction, or reconstruction of curb ramps from a road, street, or highway to provide for access by individuals with disabilities consistent with federal and state law; two, for the acquisition, maintenance, repair, and operation of street signs, traffic signs, and traffic signal control systems; three, for the maintenance, repair, construction, or reconstruction of alleys, ways, and courts for which they are legally responsible, where road, bridge, alley, way, or court work is performed by the political subdivision, the monies herein allocated may be used only for labor, hiring of equipment, payrolls, purchase of material, including repair parts necessary for the maintenance of equipment, small tools, road drags, and snow fences, and, in addition, an amount not to exceed twenty percentum of the total annual allocation received by each municipality may be used for the purchase of road machinery and road equipment; and four, for the acquisition of computer-related hardware, software, and training required for the electronic processing of information concerning the funds appropriated and allocated under this act, including the preparation and electronic submission of the required annual reports for payment certification, provided that expenditures under this sub clause may not exceed $1,000 annually, duly presented and adopted by the Plymouth Township Council at a public meeting held on the 8th day of January 2024.
Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Would you like to make a motion, Mr. Nelson?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Whitney. Any questions or comments by council, by the audience? We'll do a vote. Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Leonard?
In favor. Sorry.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Next, we have a police pension resolution will be read by Ms. Leonard.
Whereas Chapter 19, Police, Article 2, Pension Plan Division 1, generally Section 19-16, Definitions Member Contributions, provides for the establishment, reduction, or elimination of the contribution rate as recommended by the actuary. Now therefore be it resolved that Plymouth Township Council does hereby establish the contribution rate for the year 2023 and 2024 at 3%. Duly presented and adopted by Plymouth Township Council at a public meeting held on the 8th day of January 2024. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
No, you make a motion.
I make a motion to do that?
Yes.
Okay. I motion to adopt the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Whitney. Any questions or comments by council? We'll get this down. We're all new here. I'm new in this. Questions or comments from the audience? Hearing non will take a vote. Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Just a little rough. We're all new with these positions here.
Training wheels.
Training wheels. They're coming off next month.
Got it.
All right. Next by our solicitor, Mr. Clark. We have stipulations to settle. Mr. Clark?
Thank you. The first tonight is regarding Exeter 521 Plymouth LP is the former owner and Pool 3 Office, P A L L 3, is the current owner of a tax parcel located at 521 Plymouth Road in Plymouth Township, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania. The taxpayer appealed to the Board of Assessment Appeals. The assessment of the subject property was $2,170,360. Whereas based on the risks and hazards of litigation, the parties here too have all decided that it is in their best interest to settle the above-captured matter based upon terms and conditions outlined in the settlement. Effective January 1st, 2021, for township tax purposes, the assessment on the subject property shall be reduced from $1,407,000 to $1,200,000. Effective January 1st, 2022, for township tax purposes, the assessment on the subject property shall be reduced from $1,407,000 to $1,200,000. Effective January 1st, 2023, for township tax purposes, the subject property shall be reduced from $1,407,000 to $1,200,000. And effective January 1st, 2024, for township tax purposes, the subject, the tax, the assessment on the subject property shall be reduced from $1,407,000 to $1,080,000. As a result of the adjustment to the assessment on the subject property, there has been an overpayment in taxes to Plymouth Township for tax years 2021, 2022, and 2023 in the amount of $1,564.92. Upon approval of the stipulation to settle by the court, the tax collector and/or treasurer of Plymouth Township shall issue a refund without interest in the amount of $1,564,092. If we could have a motion to accept this settlement.
Is there a motion to accept the settlement?
So moved.
Mr. Whitney, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Visio. Any questions or comments by council, from the audience? Hearing non will take a vote. Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Next, a stipulation to settle regarding 531 Plymouth.
Thank you. This is a stipulation to settle. Exeter 531 Plymouth LP is the former owner and Pool 3 Office, P A L L 3, is the current owner, LLC, excuse me, is the current owner of the tax parcel located at 531 Plymouth Road in Plymouth Township, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania. The taxpayer's appeal to the Board of Assessment Appeals was of the assessment on the subject property of $2,170,360. Whereas based on the risks and hazards of litigation, the parties have all decided that it is in their best interest to settle the above-captured matter based upon the terms and conditions outlined in this stipulation to settle. Effective January 1st, 2021, for township tax purposes, the taxes, the assessment on the subject property shall be increased from $1,407,000 to $1,547,700. Effective January 1st, 2022, for township tax purposes, the assessment on the subject property shall be increased from $1,407,000 to $1,564,500. Effective January 1st, 2023, for township tax purposes, the assessment on the subject property shall remain at $1,407,000. And effective January 1st, 2024, for township tax purposes, the assessment on the subject property shall remain at $1,407,000. The assessment on the subject parcel shall remain at $1,407,000 until there is another subsequent successful tax assessment appeal, a countywide reassessment, a change in the subject property, or any other change that permits a change in the assessment as provided by applicable law. As a result of the adjustment of the assessment to the subject property, there has been an underpayment in taxes to Plymouth Township for tax years 2021 and 2022 in the amount Upon approval of the stipulation by the court, the tax collector or treasurer shall forward a tax bill to the taxpayer for the amount of the underpayment. And if we could have a motion to accept this stipulation to settle.
So moved.
All right. Motion by Mr. Whitney. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nelson. Any comments or questions from council, from the audience? Hearing non will take a vote. Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Next, a stipulation to settle, Pool 3 Office, P A LLC.
Thank you. The property owner is Pool 3 Office, P A LLC. They are the owner of a tax parcel located at 527 Plymouth Road in Plymouth Township, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania. This is a school district-initiated appeal, and at the time of the appeal to the Board of Assessment, the subject property was assessed at $1,084,000. I think everyone's aware of the hazards and risks of litigation, so I'll move on to the next paragraph. Effective January 1st, 2023, for township tax purposes, the assessment on the subject property shall remain at $1,084,600. Effective January 1st, 2024, for township tax purposes, the assessment on the subject property shall be reduced from $1,084,600 to $976,140. The assessment of the subject property shall remain at $976,140 until there is another subsequent successful tax assessment appeal, a countywide reassessment, a change in the subject property, or any other change that permits a change in the assessment as provided by applicable law, and if we could have a motion to accept the tax assessment appeal, settlement.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Nelson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Whitney. Comments or questions by council, by the audience? Hearing non will take a roll call vote. Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Another stipulation to settle, Exeter 5, whoops, I skipped. Plymouth Ground Association LP. Mr. Clark?
Thank you. The property owner is Plymouth Ground Associates LP. They are the current owner of the tax parcel located at 494 West Germantown Pike in Plymouth Township, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania. At the time of the taxpayer's appeal to the Board of Assessment Appeals, the assessment of the subject property was $4,160,000. And again, once the, based on the risks and hazards of litigation, the parties have chosen to settle. Effective January 1st, 2022, for township tax purposes, the assessment on the subject property shall be reduced from $4,160,000 to $3,950,000. Effective January 1st, 2023, for township tax purposes, the assessment on the subject property shall be reduced from $4,160,000 to $3,750,000. The assessment of the subject property shall remain at $3,750,000 until there is another subsequent successful tax assessment appeal, a countywide reassessment, a change in the subject property, or any other change that permits a change in the assessment as provided by applicable law. As a result of the adjustment to the assessment of the subject property, there has been an overpayment in taxes to Plymouth Township for tax years 2022 and 2023 in the amount of $1,603.40. Upon approval of the stipulation to settle by the court, the tax collector or treasurer for Plymouth Township shall issue to the taxpayer a refund without interest in the amount of $1,603.40, and we would ask for a motion to accept this stipulation to settle.
Is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Visio. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Whitney. Questions or comments from council or from the audience? Hearing non will take a vote. Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Next, another stipulation to settle involving Exeter 523 Plymouth LP. Mr. Clark?
Exeter 523 Plymouth LP is the former owner and Pool 3 Office, P A LLC, is the current owner of the tax parcel located at 523 Plymouth Road in Plymouth Township, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania. At the time of the taxpayer's appeal to the Board of Assessment Appeals, the assessment of the subject property was $2,170,360. Based on the risks and hazards of litigation, the parties have chosen to settle. Effective January 1st, 2021, for township tax purposes, the assessment shall remain Effective January 1st, 2022, for township tax purposes, the assessment on the subject property shall remain at $1,407,000. Effective January 1st, 2023, for township tax purposes, the assessment on the subject property shall remain at $1,407,000. And effective January 1st, 2024, for county, for township tax purposes, the assessment on the subject property shall be reduced from $1,407,000 to $1,266,300. The assessment on the subject parcel shall remain at $1,266,300 until there is another subsequent successful appeal, a countywide reassessment, a change in the subject property, or any other change that permits a change in the assessment as provided by applicable law, and we would ask for a motion to accept this stipulation to settle.
Is there a motion to accept the stipulation?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Whitney. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nelson. Questions or comments from council, from the audience? Hearing non will take a vote. Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. We're working our way down. Next stipulation to settle, ESAPA Properties LLC by Mr. Clark.
The property owner is Pool 3 Office, P A LLC. They are the owner of the tax parcel located at 525 Plymouth Road in Plymouth Township, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania. At the time of the school district's initiated appeal to the Board of Assessment, the assessment of the property was $1,084,600. Whereas based on the risks and hazards of litigation, the parties have chosen to settle. Effective January 1st, 2023, for township tax purposes, the assessment on the subject property shall remain at $1,084,600. Effective January 1st, 2024, for township tax purposes, the assessment on the subject property shall be reduced from $1,084,600 to $976,140. The assessment of the subject property, subject parcel, shall remain at $976,140 until there is another subsequent successful tax assessment appeal, a countywide reassessment, a change in the subject property, or any other change that permits a change in the assessment as provided by applicable law, and if we could have a motion to accept the stipulation to settle.
Is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Whitney. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Leonard. Questions or comments from council, from the audience? Hearing non will take a vote. Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Now we get to the stipulation to settle, ESAPA Properties.
Did I hear the wrong one?
No, I saw. You did the right one.
This is ESAPA Properties LLC is the current owner of the property located at 437 Erwings Lane in Plymouth Township, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania. The school district filed an appeal to the Montgomery County Board of Assessment Appeals seeking an increase in the assessment of the subject property for the 2023 tax year. Whereas based on the risks and hazards of litigation, the parties have chosen to settle. Effective January 1st, 2023, for township tax purposes, the assessment on the subject property shall be increased from $3,986,500 to $4,428,650. Effective January 1st, 2024, for township tax purposes, the assessment on the subject property shall be increased from $3,986,500 to $4,428,650. The assessment on the subject property shall remain at $4,428,650 until there is another successful assessment appeal, a change in the subject property, or a change as permitted by applicable law. As a result of the increase in the assessment on the subject property, there has been an underpayment in taxes to Plymouth Township for tax year 2023 in the amount of $1,158.43. Upon approval of the stipulation to settle, the business manager or tax collector for Plymouth Township shall forward a bill to the taxpayer in the amount of the underpayment. If we could have a motion, a motion to settle, a motion to accept the stipulation to settle.
Is there a motion to accept the stipulation? So moved. Motion by Ms. Visio. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Whitney. Questions or comments from council, from the audience? Hearing non will take a vote. Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Are you ready?
All right, I have my last one.
Last one.
I'm going to collapse on the ground like James Brown.
All right. Mr. Clark, take it away.
The property owner is SMG Plymouth Meeting LLC. They are the owner of the tax parcel located at 200 Lee Drive in Plymouth Township, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania. At the time of the taxpayer's appeal to the Board of Assessment Appeals, the assessment of the subject property was $5,362,130. Based on the risks and hazards of litigation, the parties have chosen to settle. Effective January 1st, 2021, for township tax purposes, the assessment on the subject property shall be reduced from $5,362,130 to $4,690,000. Effective January 1st, 2022, for township tax purposes, the assessment on the subject property shall remain at $5,362,130. Effective January 1st, 2023, for township tax purposes, the assessment on the subject property shall remain at $5,362,130. And effective January 1st, 2024, for township tax purposes, the assessment on the subject property shall remain at $5,362,130. The assessment of the subject parcel shall remain at $5,362,130 until there is another subsequent successful tax appeal, a countywide reassessment, a change in the subject property, or any other change that permits a change in the assessment as provided by applicable law. As a result of the adjustment of the assessment on the subject property, there has been an overpayment in taxes to Plymouth Township for tax year 2021 in the amount of $1,626.55. in the amount of one thousand six hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifty-five cents. Upon approval of the stipulation to settle by the court, the tax collector or treasurer for Plymouth Township shall issue to the taxpayer a refund without interest in the amount of one thousand six hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifty-five cents, and if we could have a motion to accept the stipulation to settle.
Is there a motion to accept the stipulation?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Whitney, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nelson. Any questions or comments from council, from the audience? Hearing none, take a roll call vote. Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Do we have anything from police tonight, Chief?
Nothing, thank you.
Thank you. Public Works and Sewer? That would be a snow announcement to be read by Mr. Whitney.
All right, something different. All right, winter season reminders. It is unlawful to park or abandon a car on any street within twelve hours after a snowfall of three inches or more. Vehicles will be towed at the owner's expense. Use off-street parking when snow is predicted. When you park your car in the driveway, there's less snow for you to shovel. On-street parking, only where no off-street parking is available, will be permitted on the even-numbered side of the street as two thousand and twenty-four is an even year. Never approach moving snow removal equipment. Just because you can see the driver doesn't mean they can see you. We try to keep our crews fresh and rested, but extended weather emergencies can mean long hours for township employees. Please keep children and pets off the streets. Property owners are required to clear their sidewalks at least thirty inches wide within thirty-six hours after the snow stops. When shoveling your driveway, pile snow to the right. This will prevent the plow from covering your driveway opening again. Don't shovel or plow snow into the street. The plows will just move it back onto your driveway or sidewalk. If the plow has already passed, do not put snow from your driveway into the street. It will refreeze and create a hazard. If there's a fire hydrant by your home, consider adopting it. You know where it is. If it's obscured by snow, fire companies responding to emergencies may not find it. Clearing the snow from the hydrant helps protect you and your neighbors.
Thank you, Mr. Whitney. Anything from engineering council?
Nothing, thank you.
Thank you. Subdivision and land development under review, Mr. Whitney?
All right, in regards to property at fifteen oh eight Sandy Pole Road, I have a request for an extension until April fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. I would make a motion that we grant this extension.
Motion by Mr. Whitney, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nelson. Take a roll call vote. Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Next, we have an extension request, Mr. Nelson.
I have a letter in regards to the property at three twenty-two Ridge Pike, the Outback Steakhouse rebuild. I have a letter from John Murphy requesting a, an extension until February twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. I would move to grant that extension.
Motion by Mr. Nelson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Visio, any questions or comments? Take a vote. Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Next is Royal Farms by Mr. Whitney.
All right, in regards to the Royal Farms application at nine oh six Ridge Pike, I have a request for an extension to May first, two thousand and twenty-four. I would make a motion that we grant this extension.
Motion from Mr. Whitney, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Leonard, any questions or comments? Take a roll call vote. Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Oh, it's not the Eagles. They're done.
Just because the teacher Monero isn't here anymore doesn't mean they're not at here. Don't make us have to take your advice.
All right, Parks and Recreation, upcoming events by Ms. Visio.
All right, thank you, Ms. Chair. We have so many exciting events on the schedule, starting with Friday, January twelfth. There is Neon Night in the Pool. We have Family Bingo happening on Friday, January twenty-sixth and March eighth. We have the Sweetheart Dance on February ninth. We have inflatable float, Night in the Pool on February sixteenth. We have Black Heritage Day on Saturday, Saturday, February twenty-fourth. Also, we have GPCC passes at ten percent off from March sixteenth through Friday, March twenty-second. There are a array of things that are available now or at any time. Our winter brochure is available. Pool party bundles are available, personal training, splash and slide, which is a family swim pass, they are all available now. If you're looking for additional information, details are available in the brochure, the app, the website, social media, or by calling six ten two seven seven forty-three twelve. Don't miss these.
Thank you, Ms. Visio. All right, we have some citizen board vacancy announcements. All residents wishing to serve on these citizen boards are asked to submit their resume or a letter stating their interest to the township manager, seven hundred Belvoir Road, Plymouth Meeting, P A, one nine four six two, or by email to our township manager, K Weiss, at PlymouthTownship.org. The following citizen board positions are currently open. Property Maintenance Code Appeals Board, three positions open. Historical Architectural Review Board, one position. Human Relations Commission, one position. Zoning Hearing Board Alternate? That's not a position, I'm sorry. My mistake. Parks, Recreation and Shade Tree Advisory Board, two positions open. All right, next we have appointments to our currently open citizen board positions. Ms. Visio?
Thank you. So we have three citizens who are interested in serving on a citizen board. The first is Chris Olcik, who is interested in a seat on the Civil Service Commission, and I would make a motion that we accept Chris's request to serve on that board.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Any comments or questions from council on Mr. Olcik? All right, hearing none will take a roll call vote. Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. All right, Ms. Visio, we have another appointment to consider?
We do. We also have two citizens who are interested in serving on our E A B, our Environmental Advisory Board. The first is John Bilsky, he is interested in serving, and I would make a motion that we accept his request to serve.
Motion for Ms. Visio, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Whitney, any comments? All right, hearing none will take a roll call vote. Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. And our last appointment to consider?
We also have another citizen who is interested in serving on the E A B. It is Paul Anderson, and I would also make a motion that we accept his request to serve on the E A B, the Environmental Advisory Board.
All right, motion to accept, Mr. Anderson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Whitney. Any comments from council or the audience?
I'm just thrilled that we have three citizens willing to serve on boards.
I agree.
Yep, wonderful.
But we still have more positions open, so. All right, we'll take a vote. Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Council liaisons, do we announce that?
We're just going to, yeah, announce who you'd like to be on.
Okay.
Each one, take the one you want for it.
All right, so some of the citizen boards have council liaisons who attend but are not voting members of our citizen board, citizen boards, and the following people have expressed an interest in serving as liaison. Mr. Aaron Nelson on the Historical Architectural Review Board. Ms. Kristen Leonard on the Human Relations Commission. Mr. Nick Whitney on the Environmental Advisory Board. I have, am going to continue serving as liaison on Parks, Recreation and Shade Tree Advisory Board. And as a member, not a liaison, Ms. Lynn Visio on the Emergency Services Board. Okay, do we have any audience participation tonight? Yes, sir. Just come forward so we can pick you up on the mic. Give us your name, please, and just whether you live in Plymouth Township or a different township.
Shall I sit?
If you'd like to, sure.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Mike Hayes. I live in Bridgeport, actually, three thirty West Third Street, Bridgeport. The reason I came out tonight to your meeting, first of all, I wanted to say congratulations to Mr. Nelson and Ms. Leonard about your recent elections. I am the co-director of the Monco Thirty Percent Project. What that is, is an advocacy organization. We've been working for the past year on affordable housing initiatives as well as the homelessness encampments that we've unfortunately seen rising throughout the county, and I wanted to invite the five of you to an upcoming forum we're holding on Thursday night, February first. I have a few flyers for you. Basically, it's a policy forum whereby we want to invite all sixty-two of our townships and boroughs, the elected officials, to discuss what kind of policies we can enact at the local level to try to put a dent in the affordability crisis that we're seeing right now. So if I may, I have five here, if I may approach. Thank you. And yeah, just wanted to say hello, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for that invitation. I just have a question for our solicitor. If there are discussions, is there a limit on the number of council members who can attend a policy forum under the Sunshine Law?
No, since it is not your meeting. It is not a meeting of the agency, which would be Plymouth Township Council. You're all attending, it's not advertised. You can go there, you can all ask questions as individuals, but since at that meeting you don't have the ability to take any votes or set any policy, there's no restriction on how many of you can attend.
Thank you for that, appreciate that. Anyone else in the audience would like to comment tonight?
I'm just, my name is Artist Lukens, I'm from Eric, Row One Two, and I'd just like to know what the status is of Cuny Town and the crosswalks and sidewalk?
Chief, do you have any updates on that, or?
I know that the traffic engineer was working on the crosswalk. I was told, actually, I got an email today that says that it was, it was submitted to PennDOT as of this past Thursday. Now it's gonna be in PennDOT's hands, which...
Should it go through Fairly Good?
Should it go through, no. I mean, I hope so. I don't know at what point they'll even view it, but we'll certainly stay on top of them as well. But it's been, you know it's been a difficult process. They've been pulling teeth.
That's the crosswalk at Light Street and Old Elm.
Right, right.
Okay.
And we're still working on the sidewalk, right?
On the sidewalk. We're still looking at that. In fact, Ms. Weiss and I went out with the township engineer this past week to take a look at the topography and the best way to put sidewalks going from side of Cuny Town, Conshohocken side of Cuny Town of the Blue Route over to the park there at Fulton Street. So we did walk that, and we survived it without a sidewalk, so.
Dangerous.
Very dangerous, and it does need a sidewalk, it really does. One of the things that we did notice as we were walking along is that to put it completely on the side where Cliffs Steel Company is, Cleveland Cliffs, there's a shop drop-off. And there's also a guardrail, so we're not really sure if we can save without, you know, we can't take away the road. So we don't know if a sidewalk would fit, and we were looking at whether or not the sidewalk could sort of come down the existing sidewalk that's in Cuny Town on Old Elm Street. It goes up to that last house right before the overpass.
Okay.
And, and then cross over, but that would require PennDOT approval for what they call a mid-street crosswalk. And we don't know if they would allow that.
And I don't know, given that it's right on the curb, that that would be...
Ideal.
Safe.
It had really good sight distance. It had very good sight distance. You could see, right where you would put the crosswalk, you could see all the way down toward Conchak in the new apartment building, see that far, and you could also see up to the stop sign. So there would be some vegetation, a lot of vegetation on the other side there to be cleared. There would be easement needed from the law firm that's right there. But I'm not positive, it was a law firm, I'm not sure who owns the building.
There's a law firm in there now, I don't know who owns the property.
Yeah, they have people in.
L F T used to be, but it's a law firm today.
They have people still in there.
Okay.
Bruce Riggs, folks, right out.
It's just a law firm sign out.
We just don't know if it's physically possible to put a sidewalk completely on the side of the steel mill.
The sidewalk with the number of people that come from that area and with the proving grounds, the kids coming from the proving grounds, it's just so dangerous right now.
Yeah.
And we've already had one person...
But we don't know where a sidewalk would go because there's not enough width between the road, the shoulder of the road, and where there's a shop drop-off down into...
Well, if it can go on the other side, that's fine. I don't, I don't think the community cares where the side, which side the sidewalk goes on. What they care about is that there's a safe place to walk to get from part you know, point A to point B.
And if it stays completely on the other side, there's the problem of all those parking spaces there against that retaining wall, and a sidewalk would take away those, they're like five or six...
There's a lot, it doesn't, five or six.
Yeah, so that would, that would remove a lot of parking in a community that is really strapped.
Yeah.
So...
Yeah, there would have to be that big.
And, and we just don't know if it can safely be done or if physically we can do half on one side and then cross over.
Yeah. Well, people are doing it under the bridge right now. I can say that. They're crossing under the slumber bridge usually, which, okay, to get to the sidewalk, either where the sidewalk is.
So that's, that's the, the big question is where do you put a crosswalk? Because we, I mean, when we actually walked it, we just couldn't see a place where you could have a sidewalk that's protected by guardrails because, you know, distracted drivers, you don't... With, with that drop-off down into the parking lot at the steel mill?
Yeah.
Don't know.
So the township engineer was gonna reach out to PennDOT to see if they would even entertain that idea before going through with engineering a plan.
And the reason for that was to avoid taking away those parking spaces against the retaining wall.
Right.
Which means you do have to cross from one side to the other with a sidewalk. It's a challenge.
It is a challenge.
Would you say the greater concern is getting a sidewalk? Whether or not we can keep it on one side of the road?
It's just getting a sidewalk, so it's a safe place. Getting a sidewalk, and the sooner the better because I, I worry about the children walking down that road to get from the proving grounds or from Old Elm Street from the park up to, you know, up into Conshohocken.
Right.
And the adults, I mean, there's plenty of people to do it.
So how would the community feel if there's no physical way to build a sidewalk along the steel mill side and then cross over it all Fulton?
I think they'd be fine with it. I mean, I think what they want, they want a sidewalk. They want to feel safe walking that portion of the road.
Right, so if you cannot put one going across the steel mill because of the topography?
Yeah.
Then that would mean, and PennDOT doesn't allow a crosswalk mid-intersection. How would the community feel about losing those parking spaces?
That would be the non-starter.
That's quite a problem, too.
And that's, yeah, but that would require eminent domain or, yeah, or easement. I mean, you and I, I'd be happy to come out and walk it with you, too, to show you what I mean about that really sharp drop-off.
Trust me, I've walked it several times in the past couple of weeks.
And then if you put a guardrail, those guardrails have those...
Support posts.
Support posts that will...
They're very thick.
They're very, they're very wide, they're very thick, and they're very sharp. And so you're going to lose a lot of shins at people walking, because obviously the guardrails will face toward the sidewalk. It'll be on the outside for the vehicles. And that would obstruct the sidewalk, putting in those... You'd need guardrails on both sides, one to protect you from falling into the parking lot below at the steel mill and the other to protect you from the traffic.
So like you said, the other option would be to have the crosswalk mid, like under the Blue River Bridge or whatever, right before the Blue River Bridge, whatever that is.
If PennDOT would approve such a thing? And I don't know how they feel about that. I don't know, chief, if you know anything public safety-wise about putting crosswalks when it's not an intersection?
Yeah, I thought that when we had PennDOT out at that scene, that they were amenable to a crosswalk at the stop sign going onto Fulton Street, going across. But other than that...
But where do we put the sidewalk was our problem. Getting the sidewalk to the Fulton Street is the problem.
I mean, anything in between, I don't think they wouldn't even, they wouldn't allow. They wouldn't entertain it.
It's a non-starter.
And it would be dangerous to do it. You know, not curved, that's not...
It had good sight distance, and we watched people roll right through that stop sign.
Oh, yeah.
So it actually appeared safer to us, but we don't know if PennDOT would allow it. They might not. But if they went out and looked again, they'd see you have good sight distance and you'd feel safer doing it. And with as many signs and flashing lights and extra things you could add.
But there doesn't appear to be enough land, level land, there at Cleveland Cliffs to accommodate a sidewalk with guardrails on either side? Sure, Rich?
There's money for rails to trails and brush country trails and stuff like that. And these are residents that live there. They ought to be finding ways to take some money for that.
Find a way to create the land?
We didn't get to the money part yet.
Retaining wall and whatever. I mean, there's all kinds of stuff. Somebody wants to bicycle somewhere, they can...
And could you just state your name, just for the person who's going to be typing up our minutes?
Richard Schickling from Boulder River, Plymouth Meeting.
Thank you.
You know, there's money for some things. And here you've got people with children that need relief.
And we're talking about all private property, too, is our other problem. Cleveland Cliffs is private, even where the law firm is, that building there. It's all private property. Where the retaining wall is, where there are parking spaces, that's private property. So it's not state, county, or township-owned land. If there's a way, I would like to see it as well. Right. So first we'll see what PennDOT says about the sight distances, the curve, and the fact that it's not at an intersection. Would they even allow? They may not. That may be a not, that may be a non-starter.
They created the Blue Route, and they created that road, so they created a problem. We'll be able to come up with a solution.
Thanks to this council, nobody else is going to talk about it.
We're working on it, see what we can do. But if it all has to be on one side, then you're going to lose a lot of parking. If you can even get that land, I don't know. That's even possible.
For that parking area? I think if that was taken away from those people, there would really literally be nowhere for them to park. And that would be a problem, especially on that road. Because then you just created one problem. I mean, cars already get hit along that road.
Anything else?
Is there any way to create a municipal parking lot? The residents, a high piece of land on the steel mill side or Riverside?
Well, that's all owned by Cleveland Cliffs, isn't it? Their gate, their land goes right up to the Blue Route. That's all private property owned by the steel mill.
Between Light Street and the Blue Route on the Riverside. Private property.
They go right down to the river, to the trail? That's an idea, is to have parking someplace else?
PennDOT said no to parking under the Blue Route, right? They said that years ago.
I think that was one guy that said that. Now, I don't know, I don't know if they said that. I don't know if that was meant for anyone, but that was one person that parked his truck under there. The only thing I ever heard with, of the no parking, was a guy who used to park his truck, his 18-wheel, or other vehicle.
I think it's pretty well signed, and maybe it was a fence up or something. There wasn't, I think they put a fence up. You couldn't put a car there now. And I had heard that before, they had said no parking under the ramps.
It's under the ramps, or down the ramps.
Well, under the overpass.
That would be another option. People would love that, and they wouldn't have to worry about lifting up their car if it's snowed.
That'd be the premium parking package. That's the premium parking.
I'd like that, too. Okay, nothing else, anybody? All right, meeting adjourned.